Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Okay, um, this is the morning of the executive session at six o'clock in the evening for, uh, personnel and road vehicles. Um, I'd also like to thank everyone that participated in the Easter egg hunt on Saturday. It was really a nice event, giving you a chance to come. It really was a nice event. Uh, I'd like to thank the county staff, police, the road, and the Easter wagon. And everyone who was involved. Without me, we couldn't do all that. Um, I'd also like to make an announcement that Saturday, April twenty-second is Earth Day, so if anybody wants to do a litter pickup, uh, if they call the road department, they can get bags and gloves and vests to do, uh, a litter pickup and just leave your bag. Let us know where you picked up that and we will see that the bags get picked up. We appreciate if you could set a little street by your house and give us a litter. I always do things in the middle. Okay, new reports, uh, Cohen's report.
Um, this is my, uh, written report as just, uh, in mind when we're running the planning permission, it's gonna have a special meeting this plan day to review more, especially the, uh, high lighting test. And it's gonna be out here.
Ryan?
Uh, I've submitted both my written reports. I'll start with the township, just with a couple of clues. Uh, the shovel drive building improvements, if not with the exception of the doors and gutters, uh, the doors have been, uh, ordered in order specifically installed within the plant core, so that project should be brought up by the end of the month. Uh, the year twenty seventeen paving program, the project's been advertised. Uh, we are gonna receive bids at the next meeting. We plan to get six-star EPM prior to the, uh, regular construction. On my sanitary report, uh, the revised five thirty-seven grant, we are still waiting for, uh, a couple of municipal adoption forward meetings next Monday. I'm gonna attend that meeting. Um, Surfer's Hill, I believe, meets next Tuesday. We'll have someone there. Surfer's Hill, for us today, no problem, they just want to review it, so, uh, we're trying to finalize it. One thing I will note, uh, which goes into the actual project, uh, after, I wasn't here last meeting, before, I reached out to Pendex because there were some, uh, questions about Pendex funding for the project. Uh, I sent a lot of information over to Pendex. They are willing to sit down and talk to us, but I also, uh, reached out to DEP on what Pendex funding would do to our timeline. Uh, and basically, the response I just received today was that they want us to continue with the five thirty-seven, continue with submitting appointments, and then at that point, they would consider, uh, looking to allow us to move our money down the theme to, uh, go after Pendex funding. So, right now, they said, keep on the tractor on, deadlines are still the same, but once you get this stuff in, we'll, we'll see if we can do it. And I will, uh, I will be setting up a meeting with Pendex regardless because it's required, uh, so I will notify everybody and ask them to have. Also on sanitary, the yearly chapter ninety-four report, uh, there's a lot of treatment plant. We completed that, Viola reviewed it, um, we did submit it to DEP by the March thirty-first deadline, and, uh, I think the only other thing would be, we still have two Pendot projects hanging out there that were pushed off from last year. Uh, we're expecting within the next couple of weeks to do the sanitary relocation on Love Dale, uh, over by, uh, Catalina Side. We're open to Pendots pushing that one, uh, we have a couple items to wrap up. And then, uh, the Wild Pet Hollow, uh, that project's actually gonna be incorporated into Pendot already, but they expect to be started in late April on that first.
I think we have ten operations.
Thank you. I believe you all have a copy of the March operations report, which is, uh, a few highlights. Uh, treated forty million gallons of sewage in March. Our average daily flow was one point three million gallons with a max daily flow through the plant of two point one nine million gallons. We disposed of a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred gallons of liquid sludge that went to the heat source for further processing. And to date, all parameters are in compliance for the plant. When we have early meetings like this, we don't have all of our analytical back from the late weeks of sampling, so, uh, we don't have any issues there. And the next page does detail of where we are analytically for the plant operations to date. The following page will detail plant maintenance as well as collection system maintenance. I'll address any questions on those. The very last page of the report has some recommended repairs within the collection system. Uh, there are two that I'd like to point out. One is for Wiley pump station. We did an inspection of some of the internal piping, it was clear that there was some piping that's corroded and deteriorated that needs to be replaced. Uh, we did receive three votes on that work, uh, and we would recommend, uh, award to the owner who was JRC constructed for fifty-nine hundred dollars. We can move on. Then the second one would be, uh, some similar piping repairs at the Love Dale station, though not quite as extensive. Excuse me, this is for a corrugated metal pipe that is corroded for an SSO call, and we feel that it needs to be, uh, replaced as well. Our, our request there would be to, uh, look for free bids on that and award to the owner. We think that it's certainly under five thousand dollars, probably a quarter of a dollar. That concludes my report.
March, uh, there were four hundred twenty-six events, a lot by Allagway County, Alamo Department, there were thirteen dollar arrests, five juvenile arrests for a total of eighteen arrests. Officers conducted forty traffic stops and issued three traffic citations. During the month of March, officers investigated twelve minor big crashes, six reportable, six non-reportable, and four injuries as a result of these crashes.
Right now, we're working on, uh, Ocean Street in Smithville, wanting to bring, uh, that road to be paved in here. Also, um, serving today, the branch and lease pickup service. Uh, we will go around for the probably first few weeks to pick up branches and lease. And the bins are set up out back, and they can be brought up anytime. They'll be here through, uh, through October.
Uh, nothing outside of the written reports and negatives that we discussed in executive session. I don't want to answer any questions.
If you stand over there, there's a room.
Yeah, I don't recommend even I can. It's been an exciting week at Elizabeth Town to EMS, uh, you know, obviously, I'm finding their roles to provide clinical care, uh, to the residents of the community. Uh, we've put a baby on straight up, it's exciting, right? And then earlier, I'm leading, uh, with a patient that was in cardiac arrest who were bought, you know, from, uh, a very great brand. So, I mentioned that one of the special reasons, actually, good things that we do as well. But I guess my primary record this evening is to come and update you guys, the commissioners, on what I've called you about. And I believe July sixteen, I spoke with each of you individually, as well as to certainly , uh, be completely transparent with the community on what's going on with EMS. Uh, we have begun, uh, in the process since July of two thousand sixteen or there about, uh, researching the possibility of merging with another ambulance service, actually bringing two ABCs together to provide better care, uh, to improve our response times, to ultimately secure the future of EMS in all of the communities for the long term. You know, as it is right now, I have the qualms of saying that, you know, as an organization, we would certainly be able to survive another three to five years. Um, but to survive isn't what Elizabeth Town to EMS does, it's not what you expect. You expect us to thrive, uh, and I don't, and that's what we want to do. And the same goes with Jefferson Hills area EMS, the organization that we are working to merge with. Uh, so, a brief recap of the phone calls, we've been meeting with a steering committee of, uh, several people from each agency, uh, as well as Chief Pascoe, who would hope to be here this evening, uh, from Jefferson, Zandons, and myself. Uh, we were able to acquire a grant, we got the end time EMS council, uh, for the purpose of assisting us having a consultant, uh, assist with the process of going through everything that we have to go through during this type of thing. We've had regular meetings, of course, uh, amongst myself, Chief Pascoe, as well as the steering committee. Uh, you know, our focus, of course, is to improve, we needed to first prove, you know, that the concept of bringing two organizations together would work, uh, you know, and then it, it, the concept is great, but of course, there's the financial aspect to that, uh, and the operational aspect. Uh, operationally, it's kind of easy, uh, it's something that we do, you know, a whole lot of, um, you know, we're not moving ambulances from point A to point B and stage them and, you know, do those types of things. And that has gone on very well, I can say for sure, uh, that we're providing better service to the community, uh, in the way that we're doing, you know, as it is today. Uh, there's several many ambulances that's coming in for a mutual aid call, and all of our units are exhausted. Uh, they're, they're not really responding from outside the community, they're actually at Jefferson Unit, we staged in Elizabeth Borough, uh, and responding from there. So we're shaving, you know, typically four minutes off of that response time, uh, and the same thing applies to them, you know, where normally for them, if they were going across the river, we'd be coming from our station on Broadline, on Broadline, uh, Sealy Drive there, and, you know, that's a long time that we're adding to assist their residents as well. So, you know, we've definitely seen operational improvements, uh, now regarding. Uh, and then financially, um, you know, in bringing the two organizations together, developing a budget, we've definitely been able to develop a budget, uh, that creates a surplus, which is something that, you know, I again, have no problem saying, you know, what is the surplus of Elizabeth Town to EMS? Uh, if we're fiscal year ending, uh, February twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, it was six thousand dollars, right? So, I'm happy that it wasn't a negative, but six thousand dollars has been keeping us in business for a long, long time, again, you know? So, uh, again, we continue to operationally, you know, a lot of the ambulances that you see these days, the Elizabeth Town show ambulances, they might have, uh, two Jefferson units, they might have Elizabeth Town show paramedic and Jefferson Hills EMT. Um, there's just days where we're using their ambulances, they're using our ambulances as a means of equipment familiarization and, you know, we're training together. Uh, in fact, tomorrow morning, uh, if you monitor the scanner, the scanner at all, you know, it gets a certain tone that makes our radios beep, but that's what we call, um, that will actually change, uh, because beginning tomorrow morning, both organizations will have the same tone. Uh, so we'll still be dispatching the calls that are in our district, they'll still be dispatching the calls in our, in our district, but from the perspective of working together operationally, as deeply as we are, it's just becoming difficult to do some of the things that we're doing. In fact, I commented to the steering committee recently, we're sort of to the point where what we're doing together is difficult, is getting difficult to get any further without being together complete, you know? So, uh, I can tell you that the steering committee did say to both, to recommend to both organizations that, that the, that both organizations proceed of a vote, uh, on the merger, you know? So, uh, I'm very optimistic, uh, that we will continue to make good progress. Uh, we anticipate that the organization will refer to as Southeast Regional EMS, and, uh, again, both organizations coming together, one's on survival, the other one's, you know, they're both, uh, both sort of going away, if you will, uh, a new organization being created. Uh, so again, the next steps, uh, organizational votes, uh, from, you know, each organization with a vote on this, uh, as well as just quite the approvals that have to take place at the state level, uh, to make this happen as well. We see ourselves as about seventy percent through the process, uh, from, again, from an operational perspective, you know, we've been checking a lot of boxes along the way, we've been working very hard, uh, I giggle, uh, for me personally, it's been like a second full time job. Uh, I'm exhausted, but it's good, you know, it's a good thing. Am I a little exhausted? I don't. Uh, we are actually targeting, uh, on August first, two thousand seventeen date, where we would be able to say for sure, that's the date that Southeast Regional EMS goes in service. Any questions? I, I know a question on the watch, um, any particular questions?
I know you've worked a long time on this, you're very, you're opposite.
Thank you.
I'm just curious as to what the rest of the people think of that.
Welcome to have two of you to ask questions again, tough one. Sure, great question. Uh, we currently have two stations, we have a station, our main station is in Elizabeth Township, uh, we have a, a substation, if you will, in Liberty Borough. Uh, Jefferson Hills has a main station, uh, in Jefferson Hills up on Resa, uh, and they have another station in Union Township of Washington County. Uh, and so again, the two main stations will continue, all four main, all four stations will continue to exist. The administrative headquarters will actually be in Jefferson, whereas the operational headquarters of the organization will be in Elizabeth Township. So, certainly no changes, uh, from the perspective of both the less, uh, and we're coming into this, you know, that's one of the beautiful things of this, you know, often actually your organization merging is because one is really, really struggling and then the other one, you know, has to come in and say, that's not where we want, right? We're bringing together very, two very solid, uh, organizations, um, and, you know, with good facilities, with good equipment, um, you know, we're, we don't want to, we don't have that problem, we just don't want to get there, you know? So it's a great question, I'd like to address it.
Chris, so we'll, we'll save the township money by not having to pay that fuel charge every year?
No, actually, we're anticipating that we will be able to continue to get the, uh, support from the township that we get. Uh, I would hope that the folks would understand that operating in the EMS agency, if I mention again, you know, that, uh, we are operating with a surplus of six thousand dollars. So, uh, I think that, you know, quite frankly, the service that we provide into the community that we provide at a high level, we provide warrants, uh, some support, like some love, you know? So, I'm not anticipating asking for a decrease or a decrease.
I just agree, I thought.
Yeah, I welcome that, sixty thousand dollars last. Yeah, and we appreciate that, you know? I, I assure you that what your community gets for that sixty thousand dollars, uh, is quite a lot.
Chris, um, I know a lot of times it makes sense financially to merger organizations, um, at twenty-three years experience emergency services, it makes them do as much as they can, but, um, my question is staffing wise. I think a lot of people have a concern, are, are we concentrating, are, are we, are we staffing these services to make sure that we're able to provide the emergency services to these areas, or are we pulling from different areas and diminishing staffing to, to run non-emergency transfers and, and those types of, because the last thing I want to see is, I don't know which you staff back terms or evenings, how many crews, two, three crews, overnight, three. Okay, are we, are we going down to two here, two here, one here, one here?
Sorry, I'm sorry, overnight, we are typically, uh, at two, uh, and they are at two, in true order, there'll be three, uh, between them, you know, because midnights are very close.
So right now, you're staffing two here?
Two.
But you're gonna go to three amongst all of them?
Correct, and the only reason we have, uh, two crews overnight for, for all of the communities that we provide service to, we typically get less than one call per night per night on midnight, so we don't need two crews, you can appreciate that. Uh, yeah, so, you know, the only reason we have that second crew on is for, if there is a request for non-emergency transport, which doesn't happen very frequently at night. So, when we come together, and then we're doing a little bit of it now, there'll be three. To address the question, though, about the non-emergency transports, certainly an aspect of our business.
It's big money.
It's not, it's not big money, but it's money, right? It, it makes up for the fact that we spend, you know, in the ambulance service, yeah, we, we actually, we call it, have a twenty-five percent unit hour utilization. So, we're spending seventy-five percent of the time on what? Waiting for someone to call nine-one, right? So twenty-five percent of our time we're active, you know? One of the reasons we do the non-emergencies is to, is to help improve that, uh, you know, but the bottom line is for us, you know, our average response time across the five communities we serve is, is seven, right? So it's proof, you know, that we're not pulling our resources so much that we're not able to provide the emergency services at the level that we provide.
And I guess my concern is if it does, I mean, you can hold that.
Yeah, we, we anticipate that this unit, uh, this service will have six crews, uh, daily, uh, and then, you know, three crews, uh, overnight. Uh, that's basically Monday through Friday, uh, the weekends get into, you know, where there's four and five crews on daily, there's just not as much call.
I'm sorry, Chris, um, you said that Elizabeth Town, uh, that we're giving sixty thousand dollars, is Jefferson Hills gonna match that same amount of money?
Actually, Jefferson Hills Borough gives eighty thousand dollars in form of tax.
Okay, good, that's one, and thank you.
Chris, how many square miles is that gonna be now, for the whole merger?
I, I, I honestly don't have a memory, it's very, I, I don't have a memory, I, I, I should have had, I don't have that. But it is, it will comprise of nine communities, um, you know, beginning in for sales for overall offensive purposes, uh, and running into Union Township of, uh, Washington County. It is a large service area. Eighty-two square, eighty-two square miles, I just don't remember. Other questions? I, these are great questions, again, I welcome the opportunity, Elizabeth Town to EMS has never been anything but, you know, very transparent, uh, I, I welcome the opportunity to address your questions. I hope, uh, that some of what I've said resonates with you, you know, that what we're doing this because it's the best thing for, for communities. Uh, I assure you that, uh, you know, the forty thousand dollars actually, uh, that you were talking about with the board of people, uh, would be a whole lot more if the, if the community was asking us to start providing a twenty-four hour a day, a high level, uh, nationally accredited emergency medical service.
Chris, I have a second point question. Since you're gonna have a, a link to the response area, uh, there's so many units of same mutually companies.
I have that.
So we're on, you have one, maybe public deals or, or further than public deals.
Uh, no, no, I mean, uh, yeah, we're two districts, you know, we see that District One is District Two, uh, you know, and, you know, typically the calls that will be needing the mutual aid, which we anticipate less, because there was still a ton, you know, with more calls than there are in your notice. Uh, we would anticipate that the primary mutual aid for District Two, Elizabeth Town to side, we're coming with E-Port, uh, and, you know, on the, on the other side, uh, you know, we can work with, uh, and as well as third, uh, despite the service.
Of course, I, I asked for, you know, as far as our, Chris, we're on, but, you know, if you're relying on E-Port for the funding, um, if they're having concerns, sort of, you know, there's more.
We just can't, we just have to swiftly, the transfer of the patient to Westmore and Austin, I thought you could do that. People rely on the GPS directions, you know, like that, mutual aid from all of that. I guess.
Other questions?
You had mentioned one time that people get insurance companies paid incorrectly, they don't bother to pay you, uh, you've done something to, to care of that situation.
Yeah, I suppose, well, unfortunately, what we've done to combat that, uh, we have signed on, you know, to provide service for some of, to fully insurance company, uh, and, you know, as a result, they send us the checks directly, they have the sending, as opposed to sending to patients. Uh, but unfortunately, as a result, you know, we take less money per transport, you know, we bring out hostage, you know, and we buy the insurance company, you know, so it's a tough business, you know? Uh, you know, there, there's an impression, you know, that EMS makes lots of money. Again, I have no problem sharing our financials with anyone, um, you know, there's a whole lot of calls where we go, in fact, in fact, like four times a day, you know, on the bike trail, uh, I have to do quite a few different calls. You know, you go, you expend the resources, you use the equipment, you, you commit the personnel, and you don't get anything for it, and that's okay, you know, we're, we're glad to provide the service to the community at the level that we provide, but, but with the impression that EMS agencies make a lot of money, watch the news, you know, and you will see more services again in this year, just in the last six months, there've been four agencies that I'm fully aware of that are either about to go out of service or did go out of service, you know? It's a tough business. Other questions? And I'll, I'll say it again, as things go progress, I'll, you know, I'm on the boat. Thank you.
How you doing? I addressed it, commissioners, last, last meeting, I'm working with KLA, it's a tourism consultant, um, five thirty-seven project is super, is anybody, you know, who works together to kind of touch on the cost of produce, our, our store bill is, is gonna kind of go up pretty high here recently. KLA, you said you have a representative last meeting, he's here today, I just wanted to make, uh, confirm that.
I did, when I spoke, I, I mean, I've, um, I've, um, I've, um, I've, um, I've, uh, I've actually worked with KLA, you know, twice on work, so, how about?
And I'm using the F for it's free.
Actually, twice as much as you're doing in city.
You know, the whole lodge, the things going, the water down there, lead, somebody's in control. But they determine the source of the water. You say water, it's the source, they base, they base it on your water usage, not your source.
Can I ask you a question, what service you would provide to help you? I've sent you some information, and since you're talking about it, what would you do with KLA?
I would review the project because I've been involved in over a hundred million dollars worth of plant expansion.
Have you seen the five thirty-seven?
That's where I'm gonna get all the information from.
So you will provide you with that information when they approach that?
Yes.
You were also on the other committee that really screwed up too.
Oh, I don't know.
I, I personally was there for one year, and I don't appreciate you telling me I screwed up, I have thirty years' experience in this field.
I'm sorry, you were on.
Yeah, and, yeah, well, tell all these people here that if you think that's the people answer, then, you know what, I don't even want to help you if I'm sitting here looking at it, this place is a joke.
Two-one, Penn Text Ventures.
Good evening commissioners, my name is Timothy Wyman, I'm the president of the World Santeres based in Greensburg. We are the developers for the proposed Bell General, uh, development, uh, for twenty-seventh year. Before you receive me, you have the opportunity to, uh, what I call, to approve what I call win-win-win proposal. The township, the community, win in the respect that we will be providing, uh, a beautiful restore, taking the bacon, overdone lot, turning it into a very attractive, uh, estate, all steel and masonry, glass building, be providing twelve to fourteen jobs for area residents, going to take a non-tax property and turn it into a tax-cutting property for the benefit of township and accounting our school district. We'll be providing a low, uh, cost, everyday items needed by our community, segment, you know, three or four, five months, over the grocery store for everyday needs. It is one of the greatest businesses, uh, approval here to, you know, allow us to pay just the, uh, fire department, uh, three hundred thousand dollars to, to, to buy equipment to protect the community. This is, uh, this is one of the, uh, attractive, uh, beneficial projects we're helping out, where the largest, uh, Bell General stores in the state of Pennsylvania, three weeks running, uh, with local people, uh, different families, and, uh, it's a great, uh, effort for the community, and people visiting, Harry Moore, and playing, I shouldn't, uh, see all the, uh, approvals, we have our highway office that's in permanent, Pendot, we have our entry yes permit, uh, we're ready to go, and, uh, visiting, uh, to say, uh, Bell is a great one, uh, we will enter into township, uh, see the, uh, condition based upon that, we're gonna, uh, create, uh, the development agreements, uh, here between our company and, uh, there's list for here, uh, looking at the deal. So, uh, I'm here, here, having to answer your questions, the board have, or anyone else?
My only concern was that tractor-trailers won't run off on your deliveries, but Pendot approved it, and we're good, so, I mean, if there was an issue, sight distance or anything like that, that would have been an issue, it would have been taken up by Pendot.
You're, you're absolutely right, they're, they looked at it very carefully, uh, engineering plans, reviewed extremely closely, Pendot, uh, who, uh, seeing problems. Thank you very much.
Larry Bosie? All right.
Eric, I gotta give you a penmanship lesson.
I spend a lot of time and I try to understand what the franchise people and Shake Hog, and I see it's on here, how does that affect us? I'm paying five dollars and ninety-one cents for a franchise fee, and you have, there's gonna be a refund, from who? From Shake Hog? Do you? How do we get involved?
It comes from the cable company, so they pay a fee to the municipalities. Municipalities collectively through Shake Hog negotiate a deal with Comcast essentially to let them provide service here. So Comcast cuts a check to Shake Hog under that terms of that agreement, and then we get our appropriate share from that, which is.
We pay Comcast.
The customer pays Comcast.
Right. And who's getting the refund?
The township is. We are.
Why?
In that situation, the township through Shake Hog negotiated the deal through all the communities to allow Comcast to come in here.
I understand that, I dealt with Shake Hog when this first went off.
Okay.
So the first refund to Shake Hog, from Shake Hog to the township?
Yes.
What is the township doing with the money they get?
What are they doing with the money?
It goes in the general fund.
Well.
That keeps the taxes on. We haven't had the taxi fees for all we've bought, I want to say maybe fifteen years.
Okay, that's fair.
You're right.
I understand that we pay, I pay Comcast. Comcast pays Shake Hog. Shake Hog, who gets refund? Not the customer, not me, the township. Why are you getting refund?
Because the township gives you, this is all municipalities, they're part of Shake Hog.
I understand that.
They allow Comcast to come in and provide services, they have a fee that comes along with that. They negotiate a fee, Shake Hog negotiates that fee, whatever it is. I mean, it's obviously a lot of money because our share is sixty dollars.
And they do it for all of them.
They do it for all of the municipalities. It's not just us. It's not just us, and then Comcast will pay that fee to Shake Hog, and then they'll distribute it to all the members of the municipalities.
And municipalities don't get it back to Comcast?
No.
Alan Sova, we need to sign in for the one of the top of, I don't know if that's an agenda item or not. Alan Sova? Okay, can I call?
I'm just gonna stand back here and I'm getting off of what Joanne brought up at the very beginning. You know what? The township does some wonderful events for the community, and what happened on Saturday at the Easter egg hunt was absolutely great. Joelle, Erin, Easter bunny, fantastic. I always stand and I talk to the people as they're leaving, and they always come up to me, because I say goodbye and happy Easter, or whatever the holiday happens to be, and they never, ever say this was a horrible event. Every comment as they walked out the door was, this was great, this was wonderful, the kids love it, we love it, it's wonderful that the township does this for us. So, kudos to all of you, you did a fantastic job.
It was also such a cold and rainy day, and looked at all the people that showed up, and all the children.
They all got little Easter bunnies, by the way. Every one of them went home, we were talking about that, there were little Easter bunnies, they all got little spotty eggs, and they got to get an Easter bunny, and every one of them, Jay was watching, they picked up their little Easter bunny, they held it to their chests, and then they went, "Look!" They got Easter baskets, if they didn't have a basket, I, I, chocolate bunnies from Sarah's, and Joanne donated this huge bunny, you'll see the picture on, online, but, I mean, huge bunny, and there were very few people that left, they all wanted to stay to see if they were gonna win that huge Easter bunny. It was a great event.
I forgot about Easter bunnies too.
Oh, I forgot about that, oh, jeez, yes, we had furry little Easter bunnies, and it was so cold when they all first came in that they all wanted to do something warm, so they all went inside the building and stood in line, and they got to go in the pens with the rabbits, there were five rabbits there, so a pen on each side, and they got to sit in there and pet them, and it was really great, and anybody that was cold would go back in and pet bunnies and then go back outside again, it was great.
Okay, one resolution, the resolution, a motion to adopt resolution twenty seventeen eleven, amending the current piece gave the addition of a food vendor penalty at two hundred dollars per year. Question on motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the I's have a vote. Motion to adopt resolution twenty seventeen twelve to join with Alany League of Municipalities during the week of April tenth as local government. Question on motion? All those in favor? Opposed, the I's have a vote. Motion to approve the March twentieth, twenty seventeen commission reading minutes.
Second.
Question on motion?
I do have a question, I have a question. I don't believe that the natural gas and the plant by orders was voted on correctly at the last meeting, and I know it's reflected in minutes, but my, because I wanted a roll call vote on it, and whenever it was brought up, because it was brought up off the floor, and you asked for the vote, and a resident stood up and said, "What about the questions?" Then it kind of stopped there and everything went back to the questions, and we never got to re-vote on it, but, I mean, I do not think that it was voted on properly, I mean, I know the minutes, but, so before we approve these minutes, I would like to clarify that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to ratify.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Simba?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxon?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake? Yes. Commissioner Roberts?
No.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
President Heckwood?
Yes. Motion passed.
So, when you ratified a question, does that mean that, that you're considering that vote is a correct vote?
Yes, that's the process.
That's for putting in the gas wells. Trying to put my ass up for sale. I'm eleven hundred, I'm less than eleven hundred feet away from the well. No offense, I got a two-hundred fifty thousand dollar house, I can buy a lot of houses for that kind of money. And I don't have any kids, so I don't give a shit what school they're at. You know what? There's not a power plant that was gonna generate a million dollars a year in revenue.
Yes.
Gas wells that are gonna generate money for a couple people. Who's gonna benefit, the property owners? You gonna go over my property taxes for having that shit in my backyard for an accident? Whatever?
Yes.
You know, why do they pay? I don't need a penny. Where'd that go on there? As far as I can tell, that math is correct.
Aye.
I don't watch videos on channels. Guess I'd watch my language, huh? Who looks? That guy?
Yes.
Motion for the rural department summer hours from six AM to thirty, you know, from morning to night, you know, labor. Question on motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the I's have a vote. A motion to repay gambling grant, Palombo and Miller, P C, a special council, pending labor rather, and additional special counsel.
Seven.
Second. Question on motion? Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Simba?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxon?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't involved in discussions.
No.
Commissioner Roberts?
No.
President Heckwood?
Yes.
I do have a question for clarification also.
You have a question?
Yeah, well, I got the original agenda, it said that it's not the paying labor matter, but I see the additional special counsel that's on there, like, is that gonna include, like, negotiating the contracts, or?
No.
Okay, that was my question, because it's, okay.
Motion to waive the fee for use of industry field for linear tailor to hold the eight annual pumpkin ball on October eighth, twenty seventeen, play football game to benefit St. Jude's Children's Hospital. Second. Question on motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the I's have a vote. Motion to set free from a franchise fee from Shake Hog to twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
Seven.
Just discussion, just for clarification purposes, I'm on the franchise, the board with Shake Hog for the township, this is only ten percent of these three years, we get about a quarter million dollars a year in franchise fee, so they're giving us the ten percent, they only hold ten percent back, but they're giving us ten percent for these three years, so just for clarification.
Roll.
Roll call.
Commissioner Simba?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxon?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. Yes.
President Heckwood? Yes.
Motion to advertise ordinance to establish fees, costs, penalties, and procedures for use of the Elizabeth Townsberry store.
Hello.
Question on motion?
I do have a question, Brian, did you review this?
I did. I reviewed it, I commented back to your.
I had a couple, just a couple issues with it, I mean, we could change ECU's at any time, and some of the things could be changed without, and that was the only issue that I had there, and I think.
I guess I would say that the way that it currently stands in this ordinance is the way it was set up previously. We tried to mimic the rate structure and the way everything was run in the old resolutions of the authority. If the board would wanna look at it and revise it, you're more than willing, but we just tried to mimic what was already in place.
The only thing I don't like about it is the fact that when they say you can change something at any time, that kind of gets me a little concerned about voting on something that.
I think that the stipulations on ECU calculation is only under commercial, and it is once every two years you are advised to change it.
That wasn't clarified there at all.
Did you see the revised?
I didn't see the revised.
I don't know what, because I put a lot of comments back, and then legal tax revised, and that was one of my flaws.
Okay. I don't think it was a mistake, it just wasn't clarified in the agreement, so that was the only thing I had to concern with, because it didn't say it was commercial or residential, like, instead of, you know, vote for these guys and, you know, to raise ECU at any time and say, "Well, hey, now you're huge, it's two, and you're suitable bubbles." That was the way I think it is, I just want clarification before I vote it on itself.
Yes, I have a question, I just have, because you brought it up, what is the basic fee going to be now? What is the cost, the basic cost that's, you know, a component of dissolving the old board, and we're gonna keep costs low, what is it going up to now? Is it gonna be a surprise?
No, I thought this ordinance is not to change the rates at this time, it is for seasonal purposes, on legal taxes, and to put it in a township's name rather than the authorities.
And we don't know what the cost is gonna be.
Rates aren't changing, thank you. All of them?
Aye.
No.
Opposed.
Okay, I do have one motion that's not on your agenda. A motion to remit lawn cutting services to revise some specifications and provide law return.
Second.
Question on the motion? Anyone in the audience have a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the I's have a vote. Okay, we have citizens to address, so I have, I have Russell for Ben.
All right, I'm also for Ben, I'm also a little bit, I'll be, pipeline the gas ordinances that are being reduced, went back and reviewed for the planning commission. And it appears to me that there are people in the township who want to block all conventional, unconventional gas wells, the fracking in the township, by connecting with gas drilling and fracking ordinances that will hinder or stop all gas drilling. If they are successful here and in other municipalities, what would happen? Well, back in two thousand one, Western Pennsylvania had to import natural gas, the natural gas cost me, at my house, three dollars and fifty-four cents for a gallon of twenty feet. By January of two thousand five, the price had jumped to eight dollars and forty-nine cents for the same amount. By December of two thousand five, the price reached twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents. Between two thousand five and twenty-ten, unconventional gas wells were being drilled in the western Pennsylvania area. And by December of twenty-ten, the price was seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And by December of twenty-fifteen, was down to five dollars and sixty-nine cents, and it was the same price in January of this year. The people against the fracking, they're waiting, the price of natural gas will in time return to two thousand five level, one in twice the current price. This will cost all the gas users in the township hundreds of dollars a year.
I guarantee it.
I remember that when the price of gas was high, people in my neighborhood.
They overloaded it.
Would supplement their gas.
There's too much of it, really.
On the evening when I walk, my eyes water, smoke in the air.
They said they discovered, you know, natural gas and it takes a sweat technique, it's bigger to stay in the valley.
The grave year quality in the township, the exact opposite of what the people against the fracking claim they want to protect. Frankly, there is no substitute, and natural gas can provide clean, blue eating. Following their lead will result in poorer quality and increased financial burdens for the citizens of the township. I strongly encourage the commissioners not following the short sighted demands and exaggerated claims of risks for the people against fracking by enacting onerous gas drilling and pipeline ordinances.
I wonder where he lives.
That would effectively thwart unconventional gas drilling in the township. Thank you.
High three hundred acres, I guess, police said I'd take.
Hi, commissioners, I want to start off by saying I'm not against natural gas, not against it, but the proximity of, I don't know, it's great oil, my neighborhood and schools in the area is very close. There are risks associated with, I know the fracking, I know that. I'm a United States worker, I have been so for almost half a year, and the United States has, next to no, we're only ferrying now, starting to get into LNGs, which is the type of gas, shipping that out, because ports won't even have it. They're starting to make a refinery down in Texas, but it is way in the middle of nowhere. Having that in such close proximity to neighborhoods and schools, but the chemicals do go in to the ground, they use for the.